I'll never forget when they find out the north side, the north side beat him. Simon Church, the paragraph was a Jim was a good boy or he's since the bear is just on seven north sides.
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting to order. I would like to see who first please stand and join reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the high United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Phyllis, can you please do roll call?
Craig Kershaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Follencamp.
Here.
Scott Murray's absent, Wiley Turk.
Here.
Okay, was everyone given a chance to read the minutes from the previous meeting on June 6th?
Make a motion accept them as email.
Second.
Motion is second all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Pull the same sign. Okay. I think first we have Colton Bickel here with Economic Development. You guys want to both introduce yourselves?
Yeah, Colton Bickel with Abbot County Economic Development Corporation. All at Adams County.
Adam Moskowski, Champion Home Builders.
We are here this evening to request an abatement on behalf of Champion Home Builders that they have come in and started operation, all the equipment and real estate improvement that they need to do. They are requesting personal property, you know, go property abatement for all of that. Do you want me to run through the numbers again?
You're welcome to, I have the information too, but go for it if you have the SP1.
Sure. So, we are requesting, again, Champion Homes, a real property and personal property abatement. Real property, we are looking at a 10-year abatement. That is to the tune of investment of $8,429,940. Again, 10-year abatement, the job creation on that is 232 jobs is what they're putting down here. Average pay there is $24.30 an hour. So that is your real property. And then personal property, we are looking at an investment of $20,67,490. Again, stating the 232 job, job that will be created, again, 10-year abatement is their request on both of those.
Just curious, as you're getting up and running, how many are currently working?
I have approximately 90 hourly direct labor associates, so right around 100 in the facility so far.
Great.
Producing approximately three houses per day.
What's the goal that you want to be producing out of there?
I think we can achieve 10 houses per day by this time next year, assuming sales continue as planned. I will mention, Admiral, you explained that there's a unique incentive that they offer per house that goes out. Can you explain that as far as the wage rates that are being paid? Absolutely. So, although all of our production hourly associates start out at $22 per hour, at the moment, what we are doing regarding the bonus program is for every floor per day, every house per day, averaged throughout the week that is completed is an additional dollar per hour. So if we get on all five workdays of the week, 1, 1, 1, 1, 1, one house completed each day, it's an extra dollar an hour. If you complete threes or an average of threes, so when 15 in the week, it's an extra $3 an hour. Eight, $8 an hour. 10 is the goal, extra $10 an hour. It's pretty significant incentive.
Well, I'm glad, for one, I'm glad to see that building up in action again. Thank you for your investment in our community. We are definitely glad to see action there again.
Anybody have any discussion?
Without discussion, let's grant that we move forward, make a motion to move forward with the 10 and 10 as we've done previously. It's done up to Champion, may it happen. So, look forward to the partnership.
Thank you. No, I do have prepared a declaratory resolution that would identify the area owned by Champion Builders at 1418 South 13th Street. It's an economic revitalization area and it does note that the SP1s and the application for tax deductions are in compliance with Indiana Code. It does reflect the amount of investment for both property, real property and equipment improvements that they're stated that that will bring in 232 jobs at an annual salary of approximately $50,400, which is the hourly rate on a 40-week, 40-hour week basis. But if the, if council is so inclined, and right now the years for the abatement is blank, but if there's, I think you've put a motion for acceptance of the 10-year abatement on both real property and personal property. So if the motion is to move forward with the declaratory resolution for a 10-year abatement on both, and I can fill in that blank?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
Okay.
Is this 13?
Correct.
Then I'll make a motion to introduce Resolution 2023-13 by short title only.
I'll second.
Motion is second.
Aye, aye.
Pull the same sign.
Declaratory Resolution Number 2023-13, County Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, Declaratory Resolution for the Designation of an Economic Revitalization Area Upon the Application of Champion Home Builders Inc.
Make a motion to pass Resolution 2023-13. Right.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Yeah, what's on the, which one's that?
This covered the personal and real property. So we'll schedule a public hearing for our next regular council meeting, so that would be on July 5th. Normally it would be on, on the first Tuesday, but because of the holidays, we shifted it a little bit. So we'll schedule a public hearing to be held at 7 o'clock on July 5th. At that time, we'll invite the public to weigh in on their opinions as to being in favor or opposed to the abatement. After the public hearing, then council will have further discussion and if approved, would approve a confirming resolution and then that would be sent to the county auditor for application.
Thank you.
By the way, Colton, nice shirt. Okay, pass those around to be songs. Next, we have two members of the Redevelopment Commission here to give a presentation over a possible project.
We're here tonight to request cooperation with a memo of understanding from the City Council, the Redevelopment Commission, and the Hub in the process of creating, my glasses on, creating a team to develop property into the residential area and quality of life along the riverfront. I'm going to turn it over to Tim to give us the specifics.
All right, thank you. What I have here, what I've given you is a sort of a concept and basically that's all it is. Don't take it as this is what is going to happen or this is what it's going to look like, but it's basically just a conversation piece as far as what we want to talk about here tonight.
And I will say that a while back, Economic Development along with the municipalities and the county have contracted an agreement with the Housing Resource Hub. So, back in March, we had a housing symposium where we brought bankers and developers and real estate agents together just to talk about the housing needs in Adams County. That was kind of the start of this full project or plan for the county. It was countywide plan. The Housing Resource Hub is still, we're still contracted with them to help look at various projects and that's kind of where this came about.
And that's where it started. And yeah, and that was a great study and thank you all for participating in that and every one of you were at that meeting, you know, when they did the presentation and thank you for that. It was really exciting to hear Heather say how much desire, how much demand there is for actually housing in Decatur. And that is one of the challenges that we have as a community is the need for additional housing. So what has happened here in the last few months is the Redevelopment Commission has really taken this and decided to start the process of trying to develop the property. What we have proposed is the property on Burst Street and so what I'm showing you tonight is a concept that shows more of the locations of the three tracks of lambs that we would like to involve in this project. The two tracks of lambs are along Burst Street. You'll see in your drawing, there's one area that's got to the south and to the bottom of the page, it has labeled approximately 1.0 acres with three blue dots or three blue squares. And then to the north of it, it has a property that says approximately 1.9 acres with four of the squares or rectangles. And then you're going to see a property just north of that that says approximately 2.33 acres. That would commonly be known as the parking lot or the chamber parking lot area. There's been a lot of discussion as far as what to do here in the city of Decatur, but you know, that study really solidified the need for apartments and condominiums and these would be market rate apartments, not affordable housing, but market rate apartments. And some of the prices that the Hub has been throwing out as far as what people would be willing to spend on a monthly basis have been very impressive. The study that you took part in actually indicated that people would be willing here in Decatur to spend anywhere from $1,500 to $2,000 a month for, for good, high-quality apartments or, and then if it was a condominium, you know, an equal price, but on a purchase level. And so, that's been, that's pretty impressive, quite honestly, compared to what we're seeing here in Decatur and the area as far as purchase prices. So, what the Redevelopment Commission would like to do is start the process with looking at this property and seeing what we can do to turn it into residential property. And it would be both of those properties to the south side of Monroe Street. Currently, the city does not own that piece of property in the middle, so it would be split into two different areas for development. But as well, the city would like, or the Redevelopment Commission would like to include the chamber parking lot in this development and begin the process of transforming that piece of property into what the Parks Plan has, which is a water park, you know.
Not a water park.
Not a water park, excuse me.
Flashpad.
Thank you.
Don't get that wrong.
Don't say water park, yeah.
Got it.
A really small water park, yeah. Thank you, Dan. A splash pad, River Property Development, what have you. And tie those properties together, actually, and there is some discussion, you know, could we go with a trail underneath the Monroe Street Bridge, for instance, as one of those items to tie the properties together. The reason we'd like to tie those properties together to this residential development is that it will be extremely hard to find the funding to develop that 2.33 acres in a proper way, but if we can tie it to this funding, it does open us up for some really nice opportunities for quality of life and what have you. And quite honestly, you know, what Redevelopment Commission is trying to do is get us ready for the ready grant application process that we come in this fall. So at our meeting last week of redevelopment, Redevelopment asked Heather Presley-Cowens and Ryan Chancy to come in and talk with us a little bit more about this opportunity. And they joined us via video conference and talked through the process and they recommended that we enter a memo of understanding between the Decatur Redevelopment Commission, the Decatur Council, and then also the Hub or the Housing Resource Hub is what their official terminology is, and you're familiar with that group already. Basically, what that process is going to begin doing is putting together a team to ultimately develop this property into whatever it may be. And part of that is, is going through a process of, of working with the council, working with redevelopment, working with a specific team that Dan would be putting together of people that would be made up from Parks Department, from the Main Street Program, what are some of the others, Dan? Redevelopment Council, there'd be sort of a steering committee.
Right.
I don't know if I've missed one of the groups that might be involved in that.
No, but probably just some other members of the community.
And then some other community members, you know, of course, to come up with is going to be the best possible use for these three pieces of property. Redevelopment thinks it needs to have some type of residential component to it. We have a high need for housing. That study that Heather presented to you said, "We could build 50 apartments a year here in Decatur and fill them right now," at the kind of rates that she was throwing at. That's pretty impressive numbers and so we would definitely be looking to do that with this property. But ultimately, that steering committee would lead the efforts and come up with is going to be the best possible use for those three tracks of property. Tonight, what we are asking you to do is give us a, is basically to agree and to indicate that you'd be willing to enter in this memo of understanding. We have not seen it, meaning when I say "we" it's the Decatur Redevelopment Commission. What the Decatur Redevelopment Commission did do is agree to fund the seed capital necessary to start this process, which is $50,000. That is used for things like your, you know, your phase 1s, your, all of various types of research, you know, getting an architect on board, putting together some conceptual plans, and then the time, the time for Heather and Ryan and their group. And then also finding that developer and just putting the whole package together, creating the capital stack and what have you. So, tonight, what we're here to do is to ask the council to agree to enter an MOU or at least conditional upon seeing it, you know, but also just here to answer any questions and, and sort of begin this conversation. Heather and Ryan estimated it'll be a 90 to 120-day process as far as taking us through this process and by that point in time, we would have sufficient information and materials necessary to make application for the ready fund, which will be coming out, ready to coming out this fall. So, I don't know what else, I missed anything, Dan?
No, I just think, I think one of the biggest things was tying the quality of life amenities to a residential property helps secure the ready funding for those projects because you need 60% of private equity to, to go after the ready funds and it's kind of hard to get that when you're just looking at quality of life things. So tying the two together helps make it a better project for the whole ready funding.
Much more fundable. And there are several developers who have expressed an interest in participating, you know, in this project. So there will be a process that, you know, a vetting process that would take place and will ultimately, ultimately select whoever that developer will be on the team, but there have been several that have expressed, very excitedly expressed interest in taking part in this project.
Tim, for my sake, in the media, who all is on the Redevelopment Commission?
Let's see.
You're representing them.
Yeah, go ahead. You? Yeah, me. I'm an ongoing member. Jeremy Creep?
Matt.
Jason Berg? Max Miller? Craig?
Russet.
Russet. And Max Miller? You're non-voting. I'm non-voting, yeah. So that would be.
And a secondary question, has there been an effort, the remaining property not owned by the city, has there been any discussion with that property owner as to?
Yeah. And we have.
But it's kind of right in the middle of all of this.
And that's fine. We, this time, we have no desire to acquire that property. This will be done around it. So that. We would design it as if ultimately that property would be part of the overall development, but at this point in time, it does not appear that the city would be able to take ownership of that, so we're going to sort of step away from it. And there's really no particular need at this time for that property also.
Okay. One of the immediate questions I had was from a member that worked on the riverfront plan that has been done some time ago, where there was an amphitheater in this kind of area. Is that study, part of this study?
It would be included by reference, but we would not anticipate, I mean, we, the anticipation being, this is strictly just, I guess, more of my anticipation than anything, that the property south of Monroe Street is going to be residential. So, so the amphitheater, if that would happen, would either have to be relocated or not would not be considered part of this project. There's been a lot of discussion, you know, that did take place when Madison, before Madison Street project and Madison Street has sort of taken the, taken that use very successfully, by the way, we did a preparation, by the way. And so, I think that would be a discussion, but ultimately, that would be a decision that would be made by that committee who would recommend what would be the best possible use of that property.
Do you want to speak to the people that would form the committee that would work with the Hub? Like it would have redevelopment representation?
Right, so that's what we discussed. So we'd have, I would form a committee that would have City Council, Redevelopment Commission, Ginnery Street, Parks Board members, as well as probably a couple other people just from the community. So we would have all of the different boards involved on the committee. I will say that something that has been brought to my attention recently by a couple people is just, if this were to go through, we have to be careful about the need for parking.
Yes.
Obviously, on Thursdays, but parking for those apartments, but also parking for Thursdays and Saturdays, if you look, as you said, Madison Street's been very, very successful. There's a lot of traffic down there. So, that would be taking up pretty much all of the available parking. So somehow in that plan, we have to find a way to create some, some additional parking to allow for that for the, for the events downtown.
How many factors that would have to be reviewed, you know, in the development of the plan?
It's, there's, there's definitely two competing factors. Some would like to see that area all parked. Some would like to see it be business development along the riverfront. Some obviously would like to see housing along, whatever that housing looks like. It could be a mix of those.
And I mean, wait, just.
What you're seeing in a lot of communities are housing and retail together, you know, first level retail with two or three levels of housing.
Blending of it all.
That's happening everywhere right now.
But I think the importance is the openness to what, what that could look like.
Yeah, yeah. I guess, I guess, yeah, and I, when I, earlier when I.
I don't disagree with, with looking at what can be done there and then deciding.
Yeah, that the group would look at what is the best use of that. And now I'm going to put on my head as a North Adams Community School members, our enrollment in North Adams is down severely because of one thing and one thing only. We do not have the people that we used to have as far as going to build a high school and the middle school and the elementary school. We have to start building houses and apartments here in the North Adams District. And I think, and I think this is a great possible use of that, or possible first step to that. But we are in a dire need, our apartments are packed full, we have a need, the market study indicates that we have a high need for apartments here in the community, and we've got to start thinking about those type of things. So yeah, I think ultimately that committee needs to come up with a good, well-balanced effort, but I would hope that would be part of that, would be addressing the residential need for apartments here in Decatur at this point in time. We just heard tonight, Champion Homes wants to employ up to 232 people. Where are they coming from and where are they going to live? You know, a great story that was brought up at that meeting that you were all at down there in Burne by the gentleman, one of the gentlemen associated with Champion Homes, and he said, "I was looking for apartments in Decatur and I would have taken one if I would have found one that would satisfy my needs." How many more people like that are missing, are we missing out on getting to become a residential developer because we don't have market rate apartments that address needs of people willing to spend $15,000 to $2,000 a month a week?
One of the. I was involved in the meeting with Ryan Chancy and Heather Prescott-Cohen and, Cohen Prescott. And one of the points that they cover with their involvement is the capital stacking, so the financing. How is this, how, how does this project actually happen, whether or not, and is it feasible? Is it something that our community can bear? So, and they have some creative ways of filling gaps and making things happen, but the, the project, the MOU that's being presented tonight is really kind of the gateway to being able to see.
Start the process.
Just starting the process, see what our options are, see what the best use of space is, and how that might be accomplished through the different financial resources available to the city or at the, at the city's disposal.
By the way, I received a note earlier today from somebody on the Decatur Arts and Craft Market Committee. She saw the story in one of the papers or the radio as far as tonight's events and they said apparently the Arts and Craft Market is raising money for a splash pad and they'd look forward to participating in the process. So, not a water park, that's fine. So I thought that was a very interesting note from that committee member. Tonight, we are asking for your blessing on moving forward. We would be bringing an MOU to you.
I have a copy.
Do you?
Yeah. But it, I think if we are going to approve it, I think it needs to be based on Ian's approval of renewing the MOU and agreeing with everything that's in it. I think basically also the money that the Redevelopment Commission would put up, if I, if I remember correctly, that, that money is reimbursable if the project goes forward when, when the developer becomes involved, that money is reimbursed to the city. And if you're not, if the project doesn't go forward, that's the only time you'd lose that whole amount. The Resource Hub has worked on a bunch of projects in northeast Indiana, they said never have they not given the money back to the city. So, I know there's a project in Wallbach with them, there's a project in Legionnaire with them right now, there's Topeka, they're doing various projects right now.
La Grange has one.
La Grange, yeah. Oh yeah, La Grange right on the highway there.
My biggest concern is that we have a sanitary and sewer system that runs right, right through the northern properties there and I don't think we can build right on top of our infrastructure, can we guys? I mean, I, I, I agree with the idea on it, but I know where that thing comes right down Madison Street and then has its duck bill right into the river. Carrie here?
She's not.
No. But I mean, I know where the pavements cut and I don't know how we're going to get four of those, I know that one on the north side there on the 1.9 acres, that's right exactly where the sewer line goes through.
Correct.
And you are correct, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't, I wouldn't want to build over city's infrastructure. I mean, I, I agree with that, with the, I would assume the memorandum of understanding if it's properly performed and reviewed by our attorney and counsel, but I would also think maybe we have some other land that's over there off of 8th, between 8th and 9th Street. I don't know if there's already a plan for that, that seems to be over by the police station, fire station. I don't know if that would be suitable too. I'm, I'm open to the ideas, but I just hate to cover up anything we'd have, it'd be major deal on our infrastructure. I mean, I know they've cut right through the, the west side of the chamber and it goes straight across that 2.33 acres and it's 30, probably 25 to 30 foot deep. You're not going to be able to build on top of that.
And you're correct, Greg, and there would be no intention to build on top. This is simply, as I said when I first handed out a concept of what possibly to happen, at least give us a conversation starting, but one of the requirements, and in fact, no, you don't build on top of utilities like that. One of the requirements is we would have to build around that, you know, or make some other plans for it. But, but yeah, I think it would be highly unlikely that anything except building around it would be recommended by this committee.
Right. I mean, how much are you looking for here? You're looking for a memorandum of understanding, is there a cash dollar that goes along with this?
Please go ahead and agree to pay the $50,000. Please go ahead and agree to pay the fifty thousand.
The MOU requires City Council, the hub, and the redevelopment, and the area's redevelopment commission to all be signatories on, on the MOU. So, I think Redevelopment Commission is on board with moving forward with the MOU, subject to kind of approval by, and review by council. I think they're requesting the same from City Council tonight.
But you haven't seen this MOU yet.
I, I looked at it briefly several months ago. I haven't reviewed it in the last couple of days. I saw, I saw a draft version a while ago. I would want to review it again.
Well, motion could be made pending our attorney's review and whether or not it's advised to move forward or not.
I'm assuming phase one of that study would be to see where the sewer system is, and if it's even feasible, right?
Yeah, I mean, the first thing you do in any kind of design is go in there and find out what's going on with the site. Yeah, that's a really good point to highlight.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's obviously some, some areas in both those northern locations that are not buildable. I mean, I know, we were all here when that, when that sewer interceptor was put in, so there's definitely some areas that you can't build it. That's what a designer figured out, is where it can and can't be built.
But I also don't want to hold it progress if this is going to be the gateway to studying it. If those locations aren't the perfect location, maybe we fence a place else.
Right, and I don't know where, you know, I don't know if that could be thrown into the same project if you say, you know, because they're going to know early on if it fits or not. I mean, I think, to go over looks at it, they're going to know if they can do it or not.
Well, we, we definitely need the housing. I know of an individual that was willing to buy a house on Eighth Street that was listed at one hundred and twenty, and they're paying two hundred thousand. So that's telling you what the market is out there.
Very true.
And that just happened this past couple of weeks.
There is a desire for people to move to Decatur, Indiana, if we have the proper amendments for it. You're exactly right.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the MOU pending Ann's approval.
I'll second that.
Motion second to move forward pending Ann's approval of the MOU. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your participation in this discussion.
Okay.
Next, we have third reading of the annexation ordinance for Lake Shores Edition Phase Nine.
More housing.
Okay, I'll make a, a motion to place ordinance 2023-9 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Ordinance number 2023-9, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which annexes certain territories to the city of Decatur, Indiana, commonly known as the Lake Shores Edition Phase Nine Annexation.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-9 on its third reading.
Second. Motion second. Rule call vote?
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Forn?
Yes.
Five eight three?
Yes.
Okay. See, I'm just saying.
Yeah, and then this, this ordinance will get published, and then could allow for essentially a thirty day remonstrance period, but after that, we'll record it, and then that'll become official, official, officially part of the city.
Good. Jeremy, Jeremy back there. You want to come up and talk about the public works, projects for buzzy purposes?
Part of it, I can do it by the department report for the buzzer and those again. First one, emailed all of you this information. Obviously, we're working on budgets, right at the back, by the way. Working on budgets, we, but it's pretty well done for, but I need all the action from you guys. The item number one is replacement of our dump trucks. I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to read your previous emails, but our dump trucks range from a 1996 all the way up to 2015. Those trucks have been great trucks, but as we get busy here, the city continues to do more projects. Those trucks are really taking up, the trucks are actually under a CDL, not required. For the driver to have a CDL, so they, they've worked out really well for us. Fast forwarding a little bit, I've been talking with something international, looking at some options, and your delivery, your delivery time for order is beaten to be just about as bad as Bible and Jeff's fire trucks. You place an order, and you're looking at least twelve months before you ever see the chassis. So what I need to know, I tentatively put a truck chassis into the proposed 2024 budget. Just due to this fact, you're going to have a budget ahead, or you're going to have a budget if it comes to the money. So if you order it right now, you're probably going to see it, obviously, in the 24 cycle, but is it going to be July, August, September? You just don't know. From that point, then we would have to get the bed and stuff put on it, and that is not included in, into the price of the truck. So, a chassis, just give you a couple options here. Just for the chassis itself, if, if we would decide, or you guys would decide between now and the end of July, hey, we want to go ahead and order a chassis, knowing that you're not going to put it in service for probably eighteen months, from the time that you order. The chassis alone would be one hundred and three thousand, or excuse me, one hundred and one thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and three cents. They're running a little bit of a discount. If you order after, on August first or after, it goes up to one oh five, four forty-four twenty. That is just because of the mission changes and stuff that they're going to see next year. So, just point that out to you. The estimated cost of the equipment is around one twenty. That's a little high. But basically, what we would do is we would, I would propose one more ready to, not saying that we have to do it tonight or next meeting or whatever, is order a chassis on the, on the state bed. It'd be the lowest cost that we would ever pay for that chassis. Get that coming, get that ordered. You know, it's going to be twelve months, probably, or longer by the time you ever take delivery from shipping. And then, accordingly, as we go for that equipment in 25.
So, and you're looking for just one chassis at this point?
Eventually, we're going to need more.
Right.
But, you know, the, the trucks have been really, really good trucks. The, the problem is, is they're just getting wore out, and the beds are worn out, more loose and stone will get out of the road on a few of these trucks, because they're just worn out. We're having a few little issues with some of them, but the cost of a bed is a lot higher than what, than what the trucks were. So, you know, you're kind of, you know, you're going to put ten thousand dollars on a truck that's worth five, basically, ten thousand or higher.
Quick question. You said that, okay, if we pull the trigger before July, before the end of July, it's one oh one, three seventy-three.
Yep.
That's going to be a year, year and a half down the road. And then, you said the equipment is another hundred and twenty on top?
Yeah.
Gee.
Because what, what we're going to do is put stainless bed on it, put an underbody on, on at least this first one. The underbody drives the price of that truck up some.
Oh, you're talking about the blade underneath? Is it a tandem or a turret?
That's the same axle.
Huh?
It's single axle. Yes, it's also under CDL, it's, it will not require a CDL, they, they might end up just enough to get an underbody on it and not require a CDL driver. By doing this, I know Dan has heard the horror stories about CDL license. About a year ago, it's costing you, what used to cost you about five hundred dollars to get a license, it's costing between ten and fifteen thousand to get a license. I mean, that's probably, they don't pay that well to attract someone that has to have the license. They're going to go to an over the road truck, a hire or something like that, and still pay them to get their license, pay them more, and, you know, where they have to stay for more time. So, we definitely want to stay under that because we're not going to recruit anyone for the status of ten, ten or fifteen thousand to go get a license or drive a garbage truck or, or these heavier duty dump trucks that probably may possibly buy. So, that's just information. We don't have to decide at this point what we want to do. The other thing that Phyllis and I and Kevin have been talking about is on March first of, was it 21, it closed on the Grand Street property with Adams County Regional Sewer District. We have a two-year agreement to vacate the property. We've still not really moved on figuring out where we're going to pay for building that. We'll probably really need to decide that once your budget processes. I know Kevin has indicated that utilities would kick in some money, but I really feel that we'd probably need to sit down and we start the process of getting something designed, get some cost estimates. Obviously, there's going to be permitting involved in it, with knowing that size, with the state.
Patient, are you looking at Elm Street?
Down at Elm Street, yes, I am. We would totally, we have, we vacated the closet building on Grand.
Right.
But the Parks Building is still wonderful. So, you know, technically, they can tell us the first of March of next year that your time sample may have nowhere to go. I'm not saying that they would, but-
Certainly within their rights per the agreement.
We need to figure out what, what we're doing. So, definitely the light to start working on that process of figuring out the building size.
What, what do you need from council tonight?
It's more of kind of an informational thing, which is we're looking at budgets. Hopefully, we can get something around and solicit at the state quotes, something we did a year and a half ago, while we're starting the process. They're being relatively close, but I solicited the state quotes again, just to see where we would be at. Obviously, it's a, it's a bid item. You're going to have to put it out for public bid once we do figure out what we want. It's not going to be a fancy building, it's just more of, I wouldn't say cold storage, but more, more storage than anything. So you don't have millions of dollars of equipment that outside.
Coal barn type structure?
Probably stick built.
Stick built, okay.
Is what we're looking at. We, we looked at a couple buildings so far, the one was, we're all set in order what they built, at the Highway Department a few years ago. It's actually stick built, but it sits on a, about a four-foot wall. So that runs into the wall, it's running out of concrete, so poke that hole in the wall.
Yeah.
You know, shove the snow pile or something through it.
Right. Someone can't judge their-
Correct, but also have like a wash bay and stuff in there where we can wash equipment.
We'll need some heat.
Yes. And our, our new equipment, our new equipment requires animal heat.
I was more inclined to get you started on the truck, my personal style. You've gotten twenty, you've gotten nineteen ninety-six to 2023, I mean, out of the latest trucks you've had, you got eight years, and out of the other, you got twenty-seven. I, I think that in order for us to keep up, I, I'd like to give you the nod to, it's going to be twelve months to eighteen months before you can even get a truck anyway.
And it'd be another three months.
I think we'd be smart to take advantage of the opportunity to get it done before July, the end of July. If you guys want to wait out, it's cool with me, but I'm just saying. No, I agree.
I, I plugged the money into, I think it was a total load, well, and that line item itself has got a couple other things in it, and our first 24 budget of one fifty. So, I figured in, I think, one twenty-five is to cover any extra. So as long as you would approve that line item, and we would make the numbers work, we will be satisfactory with getting the paperwork and stuff around if you order a chassis, if that's what you so desire.
Are you going to budget the chassis in one year, and then the equipment in the next?
More likely. I, I really think by the time you get it, it's going to be that way.
You're probably going to go with an International, right?
Yeah, correct. So it's serviceable here all the way, and it sells right here.
He's going to take care of the maintenance anyway.
Correct.
Got a year and a half out. I know a little bit about International. A good friend of mine sells buses and knows a little bit about the market. A few of my contracting friends, if we're going to get in the game, we better get a truck or, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to save four percent.
Is that a motion?
I'd make a motion to get the truck coming.
I'll second.
The chassis, anyway.
Motion second. Any more discussion on the truck? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
So the storage building, that was more information right now?
More information on this, to let you know that, just keep that in mind as we start working on budgets, and we start plugging numbers and stuff in. I'm hopeful by the next meeting, we can report back with something on the motion.
Okay. On that one, Jeremy, I've been over there at that building, and it's a Quonset-style building. Do we still have the concrete building in front of it? I mean, do we get rid of all the building?
Yes.
Did we sell the property also? I can't remember that hard. So they own all of it, or?
Yeah, we have use of one of the structures until March one of 24. That's the, that's the incentive.
Two buildings are tied together. You got a concrete building that was for the park track, and then the Quonset building in the back, and then you also got another one that was tied to the water department, is that correct? Or is that basically-
The Quonset, the Quonset was the water.
Right, there's another building off to the side. You know what I'm talking about?
That-
Just another storage building?
That, that entire property has been transferred to the Regional Sewer District.
All right. Is that money going to just the general fund for the sale of that, or?
Well, while you guys are talking, I'm just kind of passing some of this stuff out here.
And there's stuff in the Parks Building that he needs to get over to Elm Street too.
Yeah, he's got-
Been talking about needing a building for three years.
I agree.
The CCD files used for building too, which could possibly use for CCD.
Well, I think we need a, a new quote, you know, to know where we're at, and then see what utilities are willing to pay out of that, and then we know more of what we need.
I got a really, really good idea what it's going to be, and I'd like to see the numbers, and I'd have to pay an architect or someone to certify everything.
State design, really?
So, I'll, I'll report back in probably the next meeting, hopefully by budget time. This, this more informational- This, this more informational also going into the budgets during the proposal from redevelopment, I think we cut the lease off the list, just because we don't know through the asset management plan with all the streets and stuff that we do, or I do every year, throughout the year, also for things like parking lots and stuff like that. Keep in mind that parking lots cannot be paid through AVH dollars, they have to be paid through city dollars. So, this is kind of more of an informational thing of addition to some of the lots, you know, some of them are gonna be feasible, like Craig knows, but you get behind 239 and West Monroe Street, which is the Two Brothers Lot. That's getting to the point that with all the construction and reconstruction and everything that's been going on over there on our sewer project, once you're there, probably need to consider paving out at some point in the next few years. They can try to patch it, but that's the right, the right thing to do. So, this is kind of free for thought. As we move more into that, that discussion. Received a call today that we've been waiting on for quite some time from Brooks Construction. This is also front and back. Brooks will be moving their concrete crew in on July the 10th to start on the next round of the community crossings projects. On the 10th of July, that will start the reconstruction of 52 handicap ramps prior to all the milling and paving that would go along with the last community crossings grant that we were awarded. Basically, the total construction on, just a, just as review and just to get, give you guys a list of the streets so that you know exactly where we're going, people ask, or, you know, for the media to also run something on it. Total construction cost for the, uh, community crossings project is a $1,000, $52,000, $56,000. If it runs through the total dime, which we've been pretty fortunate so far this year with the 100, 100 bucks, uh, the city will pay the $263,171,34. Now, we've also identified, um, the local funded projects, which involve a lot of alleys and stuff that we've been dealing with for a long time and a few streets here and there. So, we'll pay those from my AVH restrictive fund, which has to be used just for this type of thing. So, you can see another additional eight streets or any areas on there on, not 12 that's already. So, if you look to the back page, you're gonna have a, this is pretty impressive. This is the highest I've ever really saw it. Total paving project or package for us for this year is $1,288,050.36. But if you read the next page, look at what we're paying for all that. $498,536,34. So, two things left. No, the, the local funded paving projects are, are part of us. I just added all those together, Bob, the one, the one million, the one building, too. Just so you know, it's got, when we're after that. So, in short, what we're looking at is basically the month of July will be handicap ramps, all the ADA compliant stuff for the grant. Probably, if all goes well, we'll have a dry July, we're probably looking at that last week in July before they start milling or first week in August. And then they will have a couple weeks of, of playing catchball. A lot of familiar faces in town, a lot of it's Craig's old crew, gonna be in here from like, they got A D B yet, so. They're, they're ready to rock and roll, there's gonna be a lot of work in the air this year.
Pretty good value on that, especially with the community crossings. Well done.
One, one final thing here. Next week comes out to round of community crossings that you guys have applied for or decided that you were applying for. I believe there's nine streets in this package. That's, that's more informational also. The money's already been budgeted since I. I won't look through these line by line, a lot of our shorter sections, a lot of our longer sections, but N S, your, your ask is just, just over a million. Well, the max down any outside is one head max of down four.
Jeremy, have you ever looked in any more into Gate Street at all?
The what?
Gate Street.
That's gonna be a reconstruction.
Is that something?
There are some options there that probably won't, only happen this year because I, I talked to you more about it, uh, it affects to, what I think we need to do there. Also, keep in mind, next June, you guys have already saw this one, but this is also the crack seal areas that we will be doing this year. So, you can see the investment that we're putting in our infrastructure this year. This will have an eight number between now and later. But also keep in mind about June, next year, probably about this time early, you will be accepting bids for the high ones budget. So, we will have that under construction next year. So, I'm gonna need you to think about what you want to see in those mid blocks on Adams Street, on both ways. Construction limits will probably, we will not be able to stretch it back to the next block. So, we're asking sidewalks and stuff in there in the quarter. Need to talk to the architect and, and the contractor along the, to make sure that we get everything straightened around the, what we need to do. That way, we don't have a, a little bad spot right in the middle.
When do you anticipate seeing that project started?
Yeah, we're gonna do it this time next year. Right now, just go take a schedule, we're gonna change a little bit, but I think the latest could be this time next year. What it will start out of, if we drag into the public. I don't want to deal with a lot of information tonight, but it's just some things that, it's becoming, um, some things that we need to. Questions, Brad? Concerns with, have any?
I will later. I will later.
I would just encourage you, when you get the better numbers on the building, it's needed at Elm Street. Bring them.
Anybody else? Questions, concerns? Talking about that.
North side instead.
Oh, where, where is that? We're, we're, we're in that.
You wanna stay up there for our request for ARPA funds?
Yep.
We still have an ordinance amendment for, is that for Cross Creek?
Mm-hmm. If you wanna have him talk about the ARPA fund.
Okay. Jeremy and I have been working on a bunch of projects we wanna get buttoned up this year and I think there, I think it'd be a really good use of ARPA funds to get some of these buttoned up. A lot of them, we've had some money donated, we're waiting on some money to be donated. Some were, uh, the community foundation helped with a little bit of stuff, but if you wanna talk about what, what we've been. So, obviously, there's, there's the, the project at the Riverside Center with the pickleball courts and shuffle ward and, and the sand volleyball. We did get some money from the county, but we're redoing the fencing and everything and building a pavilion there and everything. So, that's, that's one project, the Kikianga project. And we talked about this a couple weeks ago about asking for ARPA funds, but I'm trying to give you a better idea of where we're at. The Kikianga project, which has the pond, the dog park, and the men's and co-ed softball diamond. We are in the middle of a fundraising event for that. And that's, we're considering if we raise the 50, the IH CDA will give us another 50, so that's included in that. Finishing up the project, the football courts out at Rev Complex, we switched it from two to three and turned them from north to south. We did get some money from the community foundation, but there's still more to pay there. And then the other thing would be, I've been meeting Kurt and I and Brad, I've been meeting with the skateboarders in town about ways of keeping them off the equipment, the benches and things downtown and where we could help them with fixing up their skate park a little bit so they, they enjoy that rather than looking for other things to skate on. They've been a great group of kids to work with and they just, I think they, they're excited to hear that maybe we can do something for them. Did I miss any projects in that group of projects?
No, there's been a lot of promises over the years of, we'll get you something, you know, men's softball.
Yeah, men's and co-ed softball is the one that.
Was the prime one?
Yeah.
Uh, they never, you know, it's, we never had the money for free. I bet we received probably in my office personally, probably 10 calls late about that. How can we help once this is open? You know, we can see people around the city that say, hey, you know, how you coming on business? There's a lot of good things going on, we just need to get the truck.
Right.
The county was generous enough to give us $93,700 to put the board chair initially. I probably would have taken care of the majority, but there were still some other things out there that needed to be addressed. So, talking with Dan, talking as part of war. Yeah, we could, we'll do this right.
Yeah, I, you know, when the, when the men's softball league was going before they moved out of hand, I mean, I think they had upwards of like 13 teams and people were coming from Ohio, coming from North Portland to come play down here. They were told they were gonna have an equal or better place to play softball with lights and they, they had a lot of money invested in that field themselves and it's never happened. So, that's why this, I think this is one of the main projects that we need to make sure that we, we get that taken care of. And they are, they're doing their own fundraising, so they're helping the men's softball and co-ed softball are helping right now raise money to, to go towards that whole Kikianga project.
About two years ago, you was aboard invested money into the Kikianga property. We're permitting to do this. I believe we probably had $20,000 or $25,000 in the permitting process. So, it is approved, we can do this. We have money invested in this, let's get this thing finished up. I've talked with Jim from Custom Net Backstops, he's the one that did the work in hand about them. There's certain restrictions that have to be done on the Kikianga property to, like, Jim is fully aware of that, he's the only one around here that does that type of work. We've talked back and forth, we've exchanged different ideas, he's given me some of the enterprising. We have quotes on a lot of this stuff and I think it would be a fairly quick turnaround to get all of this stuff out for contractors and, and get, we could possibly even get all of this stuff completed this year. We just need your help to, to be able to pull this.
So, basically what we're asking is, we're asking, because of the ARPA funds, the way it works, they have to be allocated towards a certain project. Every expenditure out of ARPA funds has to be allocated individually. So, we're asking for, to allocate $180,000 on ARPA funds for parks improvements, which would include all of these things getting finalized.
180?
180,000, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
You have, you don't have cost estimates on all this stuff, though, or?
We do have quotes and everything on everything. And that's, and that's including that we raised the 50,000 out of, with the patronicity for Kikianga and getting the matching 50.
Depending on the results of that title, we could have a second ask later on. It all depends on how much fundraising that's in. It's time to move on to other projects and get things finished.
Why leaving a motion on second?
Okay. Motion is second. The only other discussion I would say is that these projects, if you look at them, they, they are for people of all ages. There's kids, elderly, it's going to be quality of life improvements for all ages of our community. So, I think that's a big deal.
Well, as you said, these are projects we've been talking and kicking around for a long time.
Right.
It is time to complete it.
Right. How many, how many? What funds are left in the ARPA fund at the moment?
936,000. And they just, they have to be allocated by next year. So, motion is second. Any more discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Pose same sign? Thanks, Jeremy.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. We have an ordinance amendment for speed limit reduction in the Cross Creek subdivision.
The last meeting, Jeremy had discussed with council that a group of individuals in Cross Creek had come to him and talked about the, the need for reducing the speed limit down and council had directed me to prepare an ordinance that modified the speed limit from 30 miles per hour down to 25 miles per hour. That reduction of five miles an hour allows us to work within our authority as a community and as a municipality without the need for doing a, a traffic study on that as well. So, I have an ordinance that amends chapter 77 of our Code of Ordinances and it reduces the speed from 30 to 25 on every, every street within the Cross Creek subdivision. So, Fares Pass, Champion's Point, Cross Point, Eagle Blund Court, Fuzzy Circle, Greenleaf Court, Highview Court, Hogan Valley, Old Course Court, Palmer's Pass, Tiders Trail, Windmiller Drive, Woodland Court, Woodridge Drive, and Woodridge Court.
Is this dash 10?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2023-10 on its first reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second. On paper?
Aye.
Pose same sign?
Ordinance 2023-10, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, which amends schedule eight of chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, is supplemented by reducing the speed limit from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour within Cross Creek subdivision.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-10 on its first reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote?
Craig Koshal.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Foley Camp.
Yes.
Yes. I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2023-10 on its second reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign?
Ordinance number 23-10, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, which amends schedule eight of chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, is supplemented by reducing the speed limit from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour within Cross Creek subdivision.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-10 on its second reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote?
Craig Koshal.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Foley Camp.
Yes.
Yes. Make a motion to table ordinance 2023-10 for its third reading on July 5.
Second.
Motion is second. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign? Pose same sign?
Okay. While we're talking, while Jeremy was talking about budgets, is there anything else that you guys want to include in the force budget? Or you want to think about what you want in there? If there's any other projects, or we're gonna have to make a two-year plan for the state of money too? For the next two years?
Any planning on bathrooms for Riverside?
Then what? We need to dive into that topic a little bit deeper. Continuing to have some more plumbing issues in that building. We lost a boiler line under the building about two weeks ago, ended up with a couple thousand dollars of water bill. So, I think this stuff's gonna need to be replaced, so we're kind of going, stepping back a little bit, looking at a lot of the piping and the bathrooms and such. She's gonna turn it up, you might as well get it while you get it.
It needs not a little bathroom makeover, but a major.
Well, it's not 88.
Needs new.
It's not 88 compliant anymore, it's not happening. Something they want to consider, I was throwing this out there, I know Kurt had to take off, but concrete prices are really starting to go up again. He may want to look at, put a little, put a bit more money in sidewalk program. It's worth, we have just very little right now, so sidewalk programs have been very successful this year, and last year and this year, so they will get adjusted, I think it's been five or six years since we really made much of an adjustment there.
And is the demolition of the Marx Building something your crew can handle, or is that contracted out?
It all depends on our building. We're gonna have to get our building, they want to get that building empty, the Marx building empty. Or wherever we go with, what's in that, in the Marx building, which more of a welcome to come down there with us. There's a little obstacles you have to jump through before we get to that. That could be a 25 or 6 project. That one's going on there.
Okay.
You know, you have the Five Points project, you have a little street scapeing, like we talked earlier with Adams Street. Basically, from the entrance to the funeral home back to Third Street. And basically, the other way from Smith's or Tally back to First Street. More than likely be untouched depending on what they get into with the project.
Where are we at with street scapeing from Monroe to Johnson's?
That was tabled about a year ago because of the roundabout project and the funding, so it all depends on where we're at financially, what budget comes back around again.
Yeah, but we gotta get some emphasis, we still gotta get pipe and sewer and all that stuff in the ground.
That would be curbs part of the whole thing.
And-
Part of that whole project.
Yep, so that you may be a couple years out there, or at least here in that project. So we still need to get the rest of, maybe a 10-inch replaced going that way for the roundabout project, and that probably won't happen anymore this year.
Where did the new water line stop going north? It stopped at the intersection?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, I know I've seen you get emails the last few weeks about some of this stuff, and if you're thinking about it, I'll wait till the night of, so we can use some good numbers. What helps? Quick numbers in our head back, but it helps to get us a little closer here.
Well, my opinion, we need to get the building in the budget one way or the other. So, because without that building, we can't do, can't tell you how Marx going down, we can't get out there, so we have to figure out a way to get that in the budget this year. So once you get your quotes back, we can figure out what Kevin wants to kick in, but somehow, that's gonna have to get in the budget.
Jeremy said every department has some equipment or some use?
It will, because we're vacating the rest of grain sharing, some parts, water, some wastewater, some, or not wastewater, but stormwater, some Josh's equipment, some will go in there. Just, and then general storage, we're building, not for today, not for tomorrow, but we're building for down there. And I had a bad news conversation that we don't want to add on to the thing in five years. You know, we're making it look like, you know, what we think.
We don't want to buy a $200,000 dump truck outside either.
And that's what we've done for a lot of years, by the way.
Yeah, I mean-
So, trying to beg, borrow, and plead to try to get this stuff inside.
Used to all fit in that building down by the pool. We've come a long way.
Get in place of the button down, what we did back in the pool days.
Also, need to figure where we want to stand with the facade project, because we've removed that.
It was removed this year, yeah.
Yeah, but we don't have anything for the future, but-
And then you talked about that program outside of the downtown.
Right, you know, we talked about, was that last fall, we talked about the, some other cities doing a little bit of like-
It's up your own house.
Outside of the downtown area.
All for instance, and saying for people to clean up the fronts of their houses, landscaping. We have to look forward to talking about it with this budget.
I think we should, yeah.
One more question. We budgeted like $10,200, that's 34% of the total cost for the Adams County animal control and shelter. Will we continue that in '24? Do I need to budget for that again? Will that continue? What do I need?
Has someone, has anyone been there? Has anyone seen like what that structure is?
I haven't.
I don't know.
I've actually had a couple of people talk with me about some of the concerns that they have with it, that there's only three windows, it's not heated or air-conditioned. Yeah.
Maybe those concerns need to be brought up to the county.
Commissioner. Or it doesn't appear, it doesn't appear to be, I haven't been there personally, but it doesn't appear to be heated or cooled, and on hot days, the three little windows are just pushed open, so I don't know.
And I guess while we're talking about that, another thing is we still have an open ordinance about pets and numbers of pets that we, we're just trying to clarify the detail. This was March, and we asked for the public to come see us and talk to us. Two ladies came a couple of weeks later, and I've never seen anybody since then, three months later. So, people that are concerned, that they want to talk about the pet ordinance, we're here, we're here waiting. You have anything else? Anne, you have any other? All right, real quick, I just want to say thank you to all the people involved with the Downtown Decatur Day and all of the events that went with it. We had way more vendors than ever, way more people than ever. It was a, it was a great showing of people out, it was just a, it was a large gathering of people downtown. So, thank you to everybody involved, I don't want to try and name anybody because I'll forget people, but there was a lot of people involved, did a lot of good work, and what a great event it was. So-
Agreed.
Department head, Kevin, Kevin G.
Call the clerk or my elder to let him take it out. As Kevin named it cash splash, on the care days, we, the police department and the fire department had a little challenge of getting dunked in a dump tank, so it was $5 for six throws or a dollar a throw. Needless to say, the police officers want, they, we got them, but you know what? You still have to have heroes, and that's us. They were-
They were sleeping for half the company.
Yeah. They raised $503, and the fire department had $247, so $750 will go to the United Way Clove a Kid. With that, well, they used to take care of that here in Decatur, and they left, so that was actually given to the United Way. So, $750 goes to the United Way, but Kevin had a great idea that we're putting another challenge out to city businesses, or even county businesses, or even people, or the public in general, if they would like to match any part of that $750 up to the $750. That's the challenge, and they need to call the United Way and give them the code cash splash, so they can match the funds that we raised that day. We see that as a good opportunity to multiply this $750.
All right, thank you guys for doing that, and you guys were very easy to be dumped, I know that.
I got you both. Bill?
I'm good.
Jeremy?
We're the biggest splash, the biggest splash was me, probably. City crews have been going around doing a lot of painting, curb painting, fire header painting. A lot of us getting caught up this year, so you see a lot of knowledge gets around this year. Probably wants to walk, use the burn management, a lot of things. Also, out of Compostow site, we have a large amount of firewood that is available, if anybody wants any wood. It's there for takings, you have a large truck or trailer or something, if it's uploading, just call our office. People are more happy to upload it. Some of that would have been there for a little while, so it's ready for that. There's a lot there.
Okay, and then council? Anne? Lewis? Anything from public? We have some guests out here, I see, so, welcome.
Good evening, I'm Joe Kozelowski, I'm an eighth grader at Belmar Middle School. I'm a member of Boy Scout troop 149 in Belafontaine, and I'm working on my Eagle projects. In order to obtain the Eagle rank, I must do a service project that benefits the community. If there's a project I can do through Decatur or Adams County, please let me know. There's a process that must be approved by the Anthony Wayne Area Council, Boy Scout Council. I can be reached through my dad, Joe Kozelowski, or email. Do you guys have any questions?
What kind of projects do you like? What, I mean, what would you be interested in doing?
Maybe building picnic tables or food pantry.
Okay.
You know, one of the things Jeremy and I have talked about are some picnic tables for that area on Riverside, for that project, that may be something that might be of interest. Anybody else have any other questions for us? Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
You're on, I can give you a phone number.
Okay.
You can do that after the, if you want, if you prefer it, you can do it after the meeting, but- Nope, okay.
There might be a lot of projects come up.
It's gonna be a hard Eagle Scout project.
Yeah, that's true.
Good.
Okay, anything else from public?
I know they already possibly are gonna enter into a memorandum where the building project, drag down town, so you can see all the cars parked, where they want to do this, where we're gonna put them on these days. And as I was saying here, I just kind of looked at that aerial view of the, behind the chamber building, that, the tile, that's gonna be the whole chamber lot, so I don't know how you build something over top of a million dollar project that we had a few years ago.
It's also one of the main water supplies around, see that's our lot. So, and I don't know why they want to spend $50,000, I did it this second year on my phone, you can see all the aerial Google view, but not my money, so. There's 46 spots I counted, you know, that's gonna all be full Thursday night, they're full about every Saturday, all summer long. Not complaining that people are downtown, it's great, but all those people got to go somewhere.
I think for clarification, that the chamber lot, there wasn't any, even conceptually, there wasn't a structure built on that. It was either still parking or green space in that particular area, but I, I agree that you don't build over that.
No, well, Craig made a good point of that, so you heard that from council.
Anything else from public?
Are you gonna meet in two weeks?
On July 5.
July, we're gonna meet on that Wednesday?
Yep. We will have redevelopment commission at 5, Ward Works at 6, council after that. Anything else? Motion to pay the claims?
Second.
Motion to pay the claims, on paper?
Aye.
Pose same sign?
And a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion second, on paper?
Aye.
Pose same sign?